I'd like to call it a order, the Monday, December 6, 2010, meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners to order. At 5:30, we had a little reception for outgoing commissioners and newly elected commissioners from 5:30 to 7:00. At this time, we have Reverend Dan Bergy from New Life Church to lead us in our invocation, and please stand, and we'll go into the Pledge of Allegiance.
Well, I pray, I just would like to extend to each one of you a Christmas greeting from the Bergy family, so I wish a blessed and wonderful Christmas to each one of you and your families. Can we pray? Father God, I thank you tonight that we can give you praise and glory. Father, I pray for each one of the commissioners here tonight, the outgoing and the incoming one, Father, for each decision that has to be made tonight, I pray that you would give wisdom in those decisions. Father, I pray for our armed forces tonight, those who so faithfully are protecting our freedom at home and abroad. Father God, may we live accordingly to the challenge and the faithfulness that they serve with. Father, for our president, for his staff, and for each one involved in government, I pray for them tonight as well. Father, bless and honor this county as we seek you in all things, and we ask this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Please join us in the pledge.
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Bergy. Item 1 is approval of November 15 minutes.
Move for approval.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Item 2 is recognition of outgoing commissioners Taylor, Gregory, and Nelms. I'm going to ask them and the board to join me down here at the podium.
Paul, your case maker said.
Yeah. Well, tonight marks a new beginning for Currituck County and kind of a sad chapter for me with losing three good friends tonight. I'm going to try to get through this. Over the years, as you work with people, you become like family, and I have to say that Barry and Janet and Jean, over the last two years Barry and I have become good friends, and Janet and I have worked together over many years with school boards and commissioners. Had some meetings where you had to fight your way in and fight your way out, but in the end, our schools and county, I believe, have been better off for the efforts that were made by those boards. And of course, Mr. Gregory met me when I first joined the board in 1994 and asked me what was wrong with me, and he's asked me that several times since then as well. And they've done a great job over their tenure. As I said, they've become friends, and they're like family to us, and they said, "Don't call them anymore with the complaints, to give all your calls to Owen, and he would take care of them."
Screen them.
And he'd screen them for you. And we do have a little plaque for each of them, presented in recognition of Barry C. and Nelms for his many years of dedicated service to the citizens of Currituck County as a member of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners, 2006 through 2010. Wish you the best.
Thank you, Paul.
For Janet Taylor, in recognition of her many years of service on Currituck County, dedicated to the citizens of Currituck County as a member of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners, 2006 to 2010. Congratulations and thank you. And we're going to let each of them have the last word, as long as it's kind, as soon as we get done. And to Jean Ansel Gregory, for his many years of dedicated service to the citizens of Currituck County as a member of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners, 2006, 2010. Mr. Gregory.
Thank you.
And...
Thank the observer for round the applause.
Would you like to say anything, Mr. Nelms?
Whew. Well, I really don't know what to say. I guess the outstanding thing is that this board, in the last two years, has worked extremely well together. We have become one family, and I think we all, even in pass boards that Paul and I and Jean have served on here, and Owen, that we all are here for the benefit of Currituck County. The only advice I would leave you is that you have the best financial situation of any county in the Alamo County region. As chairman of the Alamo County Commission still, I can attestify to that. We have a county manager, Mr. Scanlon, that is outstanding, and his staff with Ms. Tatum and Mary are more than outstanding. And we now have a county attorney that has given me, the two years that I was chairman, tremendous amount of help and guidance. And we're very, very lucky to have these people working for Currituck County. And I would just tell the new board, Mr. Petrie taking over my seat, that rely on these people, they will steer you right every single time. If you need legal help, you go to Ike. If you need financial help, you go to Dan, and this county will continue to progress. Currituck County is the outstanding county in all of northeast North Carolina, not just because of the three of us that are leaving, but because of the pass boards and because of the traditions. Number one we stayed with is dedicating ourselves, as Ms. Taylor has done, to education. And I go back, I see my friend Bill Richardson was the county manager back when I was on the board in the 80s, and there's a lot that hasn't changed, but change is inevitable, and that's what we're going through now. I'm very optimistic about the new board and the new members that are taking over. I think they're going to do a great job, and I think they're going to get us out of this financial mess that the whole country's in.
It's nice when the first speaker says everything.
Oh, you say diddah.
That's right. But I have enjoyed, I've served the county for 18 years now, I believe, dedicatedly that I'm here because it's God's will. That's what I've always told everybody when I ran. If it's God's will, He'll put me there. If not, He's got something else. So He's got some big things stored up for me because He's had me here for 18 years. But also my family, who have sacrificed for the past 18 years so that I could serve this county. For the staff that's here, they're awesome. Like Barry just said, that's where the knowledge is. I'm not a planning director because I don't have that education. Ben Woody does. I'm not the county manager because I don't have the education. Dan Scanlon does. Same thing with the attorney. So lean on those people who know their job and know what needs to be done for the county. But again, and to the people, thank you for allowing me to serve you.
That really don't leave much to be said, that they back over it all. We have just a tremendous staff, and the commissioners can't do anything unless they do have a good staff. But we've accomplished, you know, I was reminiscing the other day, I first come on the board in 1992, and we have done so much and accomplished so much in this county since 1992. It's just unbelievable, really. And a lot of that was due to pass boards that had taken good care of this county. And I was thinking back, you know, just reminiscing, I wanted to leave on a lighter note, I wanted to leave on the light side, and most of you know, I retired from Ford Motor Company, I was in there 38 years. And I knew I was carrying a heavy load with Ford, but I didn't know as soon as I left, just a little while after I left, they were going to close the whole plant down. And I was just, I was just going to run that body of commissioners here tonight, you know, I've been here a long time. I bet you had a great load, and folks just don't need to close this whole county. Paul, I did forget to say one thing. I did want to thank the people of Currituck for allowing me to serve as long as I have served, because I owe the folks of Currituck a great gift, I got to gratitude, because you'll learn more with this job than you'll learn anywhere else.
So far.
Thank you.
Take care of him now.
I will.
Yes, I thought you were going to work out with happy trails to you.
I think we'll skip item 3 for right now, and we don't need a recess. I think it's appropriate now that the Honorable Ray Matusco, our newly elected clerk of Superior Court, come forward and give the oath of office for the newly elected commissioners. Mr. Petrie, Mr. Martin, and Ms. Gilbert, if you'll come forward. And I would like to recognize Ray Matusco, who is our new clerk of the courts, and I believe he was sworn in earlier this morning. It was a very emotional and exciting time for him this morning as well, and we look forward to you serving the citizens of Currituck County.
Thank you, Mr. Petrie. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you for coming out this evening, and I'd like to thank Dan Scanlon and the Board of Commissioners for inviting me to come out to the commissioners' meeting, and it is my honor and pleasure to administer the oaths for the newly elected commissioners for Currituck County. At this time, I'd like to call up Marion Gilbert, and if you want any family members to come up with you, they may come up with you. When I'm finished administering the oath to the three commissioners, I'd like to have all three of them come up together for just a minute, in case anybody wants to get any pictures or anything. Place your left hand on the vial, raise your right hand. Do you, Marion Gilbert, solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God? And do you, Marion Gilbert, swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the office of Currituck County Commissioner according to the best of your skill and ability, according to law, so help you God? Congratulations.
I have my family here, I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time, but this is my father, Harry Gilbert, my nephew Buddy Gilbert, my niece Savannah Gilbert. I have my whole family here, my cousins, my other brothers, my aunts, my cousins, and I'd also like to thank Councilwoman Debbie Ritter from the city of Chesapeake, and Gilstan, Honorable Debbie Ritter, and her husband Ron, who has supported me for many years in any endeavors that I've had, but I'd also like to thank them.
Do you, Paul R. Martin, solemnly and sincerely swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I do.
Paul R. Martin, do you swear or affirm that you will well and truly execute the duties of the office of Currituck County Commissioner according to the best of your skills and ability, according to law, so help you God?
I will.
Congratulations, sir.
This is my son Patrick, my daughter Gina, and my wonderful wife Charlotte, and thank you all for being here.
Do you, Butch Petrie, solemnly and sincerely swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
And do you, Butch Petrie, swear or affirm that you will well and truly execute the duties of the office of Currituck County Commissioner according to the best of your skill and ability, according to law, so help you God?
I will.
Okay, we could have the other commissioners come up?
This is my best friend, my wife, my soulmate, and my campaign manager. She's my true north, and her name is Wanda, and she's the smile, I couldn't live without.
Could we have Marion and Paul come back, please? These are our three new commissioners. I'd like to congratulate all of them as a group, and I know that you will do a great job and serve the citizens of Currituck well. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
Now get to work. We're going to take a recess in just a minute.
Yeah, as soon as y'all take your seats, we're going to vote for chairman and vice chairman.
Sir.
Then we're going to take a short recess to reorganize the board, give folks a chance to speak to any of them you'd like to, then we'll get on with the business of the evening. And at this time, item 5 is election of chairman. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Scanlon to handle the election of the chairman and vice chairman.
Yes, sir. Pursuant to North Carolina general statutes, the first meeting in December, the statutes lay out, it is a time for the Board of Commissioners to reorganize themselves, and this is our first meeting in December, and so that is the first item of business in front of you. So at this time, I'd like to open the floor for nominations for chairman of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Scanlon, I'd like to place a nomination in the name of my good friend and colleague, Commissioner Vance Idlet, for chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
Second.
Mr. Scanlon, I move nominations be closed.
Okay, nominations closed. All in favor of Vance Idlet as the chairman of Currituck County Board of Commissioners, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Congratulations, Mr. Idlet.
Thank you.
And I'll turn the meeting over to you for appointment of the vice chair.
Let's see, item 6, election of vice chairman. I would like to open the floor for nominations.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Commissioner John Rohr for vice chairman.
Anyone else?
I make a motion, nominations be closed.
Nomination, to close the nomination, fine. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, Mr. John Rohr, you are now vice chairman, congratulations, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll take a five-minute recess so everyone can get their computers and stuff hooked up, and then we'll reconvene. If you'd ever want to take your seats, we'll reconvene the meeting. Before we get started, I would also like to recognize Sheriff Johnson, who was also sworn in this morning down in Derrick County. Tried to swear in again this evening, but she neglected, or rejected that offer, so thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting back to order, and Mr. O'Neil, I will ask you and the rest of the board to meet me center stage, please. As you all know, Mr. O'Neil, he's been our chairman for the last year, and I would like to present him with a plaque in recognition of his dedicated service as chairman of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners this past year. Also, on a personal note, I'd like to thank you for allowing me, as your vice chairman, to be really engaged in the issues concerning our county. Ladies and gentlemen, I can tell you firsthand that Paul's thoughts and decisions are made with the best interest of our county and citizens, and I'd like to thank you, Paul, for your service. Anyone else like to say anything?
I'd like to thank Paul for carrying me like a suitcase all through these many years. I appreciate the input and the wisdom and the experience, because those of us new to this process certainly need guidance, and you certainly were a good teacher for that.
Thank you.
Appreciate you joining me in the realm of ex-chairman.
Yep. Well, I've said a little bit tonight, I'll say just a little bit more. Being the chairman is truly an honor. You are the face of Currituck County.
We're in trouble now.
We're in good hands. Vance as vice chairman has been a very integral part of helping me with a lot of decisions and a lot of things that we've done over the last year, as has the other board. I can say the boards work very well, they put their time in, they study the issues and make decisions. Sometimes the decisions don't make everybody happy, but they've made a long and thoughtful process to reach the decisions they make. And to you new commissioners, take your time, ask questions, don't jump out there, you'll have plenty of time to embarrass yourself. And Vance is our new chairman, and he needs your support, and he'll do a great job as chairman. You know, as I said, the previous commissioners did a good job, the ones I'm currently serving with, I feel like have done a good job, and I'm confident that the new ones, and of course, your kind of old hat, you've been around before, but I'm confident and feel very optimistic about Currituck County, and want to thank all the people who've supported me over the last year, and the Board of Commissioners especially, and my wife and my children for when I'm not, when I'm not home. And the staff, they've done a wonderful job, they've been recognized several times, but I have recognized them, they've been integral, and I appreciate all their help and assistance.
This is not on the agenda, but I would just like to take this opportunity to welcome all of our new members. I look forward to working with you in this coming year, two years, however long we're here for. We have a lot of issues that are in front of us. Currituck County is a wonderful place to live, and by gracious, I'm going to do my best to keep it that way. So I look forward to y'all's support, and I hope that we can get some good things done. Thank you very much. Also, I'd be remiss to not mention our outgoing commissioners. As Paul has already alluded to, we certainly did have a good working relationship. It was a little bumpy the first three or four months, but after that, it really came together, and we really all got our heads together and worked hard to do good things. So with that, thank you. Okay, item 7 is approval of the agenda. We have four changes to tonight's agenda. First, I'd like to delete item 13, appointment to the Workforce Development Board. Second, I'd like to add, as item 13A, the nomination and approval of a member to serve as a voting delegate to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Legislative Goals Conference. And I'd like to add to the consent agenda, resolution of appreciation for John Forbes Jr., and approval of a public official bond for our sheriff's department. Do I have a motion?
Sir, mayor.
Second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? The ayes have it. Next is our public comment period. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a time where anyone from the audience can come up and speak about any issue that's not on tonight's agenda. Mr. McCree is our timekeeper. I would ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. Mr. McCree, I will ask you to be our timekeeper.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
With that being said, the first speaker is Liz Vaughn.
Good evening. I'm Elizabeth Vaughn. I'm the host of The Bird's Eye View, and I help out behind the scenes here at the meetings. Congratulations to our new board members, we look forward to working with you. I wanted to bring some attention to a really great program going on now in Currituck County, it's called Operation Santa, and it's being run by the Department of Social Services. And what this is, it allows community members to donate new toys or to even sponsor a local child who otherwise might not get anything this holiday season. You can find out more information on currituckgovernment.com. You can also, this is a shameless plug, find more information on this week's edition of The Bird's Eye View, which you can also find on currituckgovernment.com, and it's also on our local access channel. So if you can, get out there and help our local children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Hank Harrelson.
Good evening, sir. Good evening. Congratulations, new commissioners. If you can indulge me, maybe 10 or 15 seconds more than three, I hope I can get through this real quick. Recent comments in the Daily Advance talk about the new voters in Currituck being from out of state and not knowing what's in, anything about local politics. This is not surprising for this area. We're isolated in this part of the state. The state newspaper, News and Observer, is caring very much about this area except for articles about black water. In years past, most of their articles were only about the county suing the state for the airport. The local newspaper, the Daily Advance, concentrates on Los Angeles City and Camden area, and only when there are sensational items like the fighting of various boards, black water, and other negative items, rarely do you see any positive articles on Currituck. Let's not mention the local sports items for Currituck County schools, parks, and wrecks. I guess we need to write those articles for the Daily Advance. The main reason for being here is to bring to your attention another media problem that we have, that you have some control over. Our current cable provider, MediaCom, only supplies one North Carolina television station. WITN, while not being a true northeastern North Carolina media outlet, is our only source of North Carolina news. As you should be aware, today, right now, WITN is blocked periodically for Currituck residents. The reason for this is from complaints from Virginia TV stations, mainly WABY. TV stations, mainly WAVY, an NBC affiliate, that we are part of their broadcast demographic area. While we are very close to Virginia, we are residents of the state of North Carolina, not the Commonwealth of Virginia. During the past few years' elections, I've tried to get state information from TV, only to be blocked due to MediaCom setting a timer to block WITN. As a North Carolina resident, I would care less who's running for office in Virginia. I do work in Virginia, but I cannot vote there. The FCC ruling that only, that, that says the only duplicating program is to be blocked. When a national election is being held, the local stations, both in Virginia and North Carolina, show coverage of election results during what is considered prime network programming, but we cannot see our own state information because we are blocked. Virginia stations do show some scrolling information at the bottom of the screen, but I feel this is way, this is their way of saying to the FCC, "Look, we're doing our part for North Carolina." It's funny that the government-funded PBS stations do not have the same problem. For example, channels two and 15. One of these is located in North Carolina, the other in Virginia. Regional coverage of ECU, sporting events covered by WITN are often blocked for half or all the broadcasts because MediaCom has a simple timer set to cut off WITN. Usually, a week after, a week or so after a time change, you, you still have a problem with the, with MediaCom's timer. I have called MediaCom on this, and of course, the person in the middle of the country does not know what I'm talking about. The local office has hours of 9:00 to 4:30. Most people are working until 5:00 p.m., so you cannot get to a local office after work. MediaCom does not review the programming differences between WITN and WAVY, and automatically blocks WITN at designated times. This FCC ruling not only affects cable but satellite transmissions for our area. We are not allowed any North Carolina stations in this region for satellite broadcast. While the FCC problem is something you have little control over, I would like for you to take this up with Representative Jones and our two senators. The MediaCom timer problem, you have some power over to take up with MediaCom, since you control the contract here in the county. I have called many times to MediaCom to complain, but I cannot get anyone locally. No local number in the phone book. Calling the 1-800 number, I get someone in a call center in the middle of the country that has no idea of the situation or where Currituck is located, and talks with the station manager at WITN. He has complained to MediaCom, and MediaCom throws their hands up. They cannot do anything. Wrong answer. Check out the North Carolina stations listed in Lisp City and Dare County lineup, due to the, I have these problems. You would think that way you would complain about Dare County would fall to Virginia residents down there during the summer, and with them having a chance to see a North Carolina station. Again, we are North Carolina residents, not Virginia residents, and I would be able to have, I'd like to be able to have North Carolina news, coverage of this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harrelson, would you please give your record, or your address for the record, please?
Uh, 147 Currituck Highway.
Thank you. Ben, could we look into that and see if maybe we can touch base with MediaCom and see if we can maybe help solve some of these issues?
Yes, sir.
Our next speaker is Vic Culberson. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is Vic Culberson. My address is 140A Camelia Drive in Moyoc. On behalf of so many people, newly-elected Commissioners, we welcome you to this position tonight. In staying-in Commissioners, we thank you for your years of service and look forward to some amazing things in the days ahead. My family and I have been here for over 11 years, and we have seen some amazing things happen in this community, in this county. This is a special, special county. This is a special place in the world that God has created and has some very special and powerful things to do. I pray blessing upon you. I pray wisdom for you. I pray grace for you, and I pray that the Spirit of the Lord would guide you in everything that you do for all of the residents, all of the residents of Currituck County. God bless you, and thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we have Karen Whitfield. And Mrs. Whitfield, if you would, again, restate your name and address for the record, please. Welcome.
It's probably too high for me.
You can bring it down.
Okay. Karen Scarborough Whitfield, 1122 Corolla Village Road in Corolla, North Carolina. Good evening. I am here to voice my family's opposition to the Corolla Small Village Plan with special emphasis on the historic overlay district proposal. We're opposed because we do not want decisions that directly affect our home, our yard, and our business made, be made by committees comprised of people that don't live in the village and people we don't even know. They have no understanding of what the village's like and what the independent spirit of the true outer bankers stands for. We don't feel like the village residents have been really given enough information and enough notification of what is going on. We've got friends that are just now finding out about it, and, uh, we haven't really had opportunity to serve on these committees from the get-go. So, we're coming in from behind and always, you know, getting information through the grapevine, which leads to a lot of rumors and misinformation. It's also been boasted that our roads will be closed, and batteries can be easily changed. If so, wouldn't that be discrimination, and can I be drawn out? I would like to do that. We want the village to stay the same. The capital improvements, such as hot sidewalks, boardwalks, parking lots, will alter the rustic charm. I lived there. My family's lived there for many years. I live in one of the oldest homes in there, the Pell Austin home, and we've done a pretty good job so far. People wouldn't be so enthralled with it. We're aware that communities have problems, and we welcome the opportunity to work with the planning board on a, one-on-one basis. We really would. But to do an overlay and just force us is really not quite what works for us. The older Outer Banks has a unique culture and self-reliant spirit. Please don't squash out with overregulation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Jay Bender. Good evening, Jay. If you would give your name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
I will. Jay Bender, my address is 1130 Corolla Village Road, and I'm speaking tonight also on the small area plan, and I'm doing so, my dear friend Norris Austin, who, and I've grown up in Corolla, as many of you know from all these years, and one of the things I usually, in all my years in garden and doing the historical tours of the beach, much of this I learned from Norris and the other heirs, the Whitfields, the Scarboroughs, the Parkers, all of those folks over the years, you know, that's the heritage I've gained from the people, not just the buildings and so forth. So, all these years in particular, Mr. Austin, I feel, has been the lunchpin for Corolla in providing the history that we all have, the oral history that's been passed down, and the new plan that, that is, that you're proposing, these folks, especially that have been there for generations and generations, if they could have the option to be excluded or included, I think they, they should have first choice. And I'm asking the board, I know this is still, this is still in the early stages, but these residents who, for 30, 40 years, gave us what we have there today, they put Corolla the way it is today, and I simply ask you to please take that into consideration as we move forward, because if, again, Norris, to my knowledge, has never come forth and asked for anything, and every Friday, he's been at the Whalehead Club conducting tours and giving everything constantly, again and again, and I want y'all to keep that in mind as we move forward with the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a planning item for consideration and action. It's PB 00-15, side recycling. It's an application for renewal of a special use permit for demolition landfill operations and malt sale stockpile area located at 7565 Carrottoke Highway, tax map 110, parcels 38 and 39, Papa Branch Township. This is a special use permit. I will ask Mr. McCree to give a little history on how we worked in it during a special use permit.
Yes, this is a quasi-judicial proceeding. The board, of course, unlike a legislative decision, when you, when you were considering whether to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, you sit as a quasi-judicial body. That means that you are required to comply with certain constitutional rights to be afforded the applicant, which, which includes, among other things, the right to due process, that you consider only evidence that, that is presented to you under oath, that you not rely upon hearsay evidence for important findings of fact, and that the applicant be given the opportunity to directly examine and to cross-examine witnesses. That ma, so accordingly, then, all witnesses will be placed under oath at the beginning of this proceeding. It's also important to remember that the burden of proof first falls upon the applicant to prove their case, and if they have proven their case, then the burden of proof falls upon those in opposition. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I think it'd be appropriate for you to ask those that intend to present evidence to the board to come forward at this time and be sworn.
As Mr. McCree said, special use permit process, anyone who'd like to speak on this issue must come forward and be sworn in. Please raise your right hand and place your left hand on the Bible. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
I do. Thank you. Mr. Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request, not really a request, this is actually a renewal of a special use permit for soundside recycling. What the use is, is a demolition landfill. You can see on the zoning map, the majority of the property, which is highlighted in red, is all agricultural, agricultural, and the front part of the property is zone GB, or general business. This request initially came before the Board of Commissioners in 2000, actually dates back a number of years. In 2000, a board approved the original special use permit for a demolition landfill. Subsequently, since 2000, the board has always required Mr. Newbern to come back before him and, before the board and receive updates for the use permit. Beginning in December of 2005, that particular Board of Commissioners then approved an extension to the use permit, but also required that Mr. Newbern begin the process of moving soundside recycling of the demolition, demolition operations further east on the property, basically further away from Carrottoke Highway. And you can see there on the, on the, kind of a closer view of the aerial photograph, you can see at the front of the property, the activity that occurs on the site. Back in 2005, what was originally proposed was that the, that's the original site plan, but you see right, right towards the left side of that, it says power line right-of-way. I want to say that's 1,000 feet or so off, off the road. At that point, 2005, it was suggested that all the, all the operations be moved east of that power line right-of-way. So again, that's further back onto the site. Since 2006, basically, I believe, and I'll let Mr. Newbern expand on this more, but I believe he initiated the process of obtaining permits from the state, because beyond just the county requesting that the operations be moved, Mr. Newbern also has to get permits from the state of North Carolina to do that, through several divisions, actually. In 2007, December, it came back before the board again, and Mr. Newbern requested another extension of the use permit. A three-year extension was granted in 2007, again with the condition primarily that the operation be moved east of the power line right-of-way, or further away from the highway. We're here before you tonight, and I've provided the memo in your packet for you to read. Basically, and we just got information back from the state, that they've finished a review of the permit, I want to say a couple of weeks ago, actually, and, and there's still some, some additional work that needs to be done to move the operation to the east of the power line right-of-way, and I'll let Mr. Newbern explain that in more detail. But effectively, what's before you tonight is additionally be another request to extend the permit, because as I've, as I've just illustrated, the operations are still not moved east of the power line. Part of that is because there hasn't been a state, a proper state permit obtained yet to make that move. So what the board has to consider, consider tonight is if you do want to allow an extension, you have to determine how long that will be, and then any additional conditions you may want to put on that extension. I would suggest, in addition to putting a time limit, that you may want to consider requiring that Mr. Newbern, and he does this, he does a pretty good job of this, but continue to provide the staff updates, so we can make sure that this permitting process is being executed through the state. And of course, you also want to make sure that all the, all the previous conditions are complied with, and all county ordinances are complied with. That's, that's all the presentation I have from staff's perspective tonight. I can answer any questions you have. Mr. Newbern is here also, and he can probably shed more light on the status of the permit as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ben. Any questions for Mr. Woody?
Mr. Woody, have you?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
You've been in contact with the state about the status of this permit, correct?
I have, yes, sir.
And they are working the permit, and you don't see any issues that are going to be difficulties?
They are. In fairness to Mr. Newbern, and I'll say this, the state has been very slow in their review. They, they have had this application for, I would say, almost two years now, I want to say. The last set of comments I saw from the state, they don't look that major. They look like they're comments that can be easily met, so I, I don't think it, I don't think it would take three years to get this permit issued and done. So I'll just say that. I think we're at a point now where there's, it's, it's almost at the finish line of the state permit.
Okay. Mr. Newbern, any comments?
The, the state's comments that for, that they come back with from, they want, they want changed on my application, that can all be finished up this week by my engineer and resubmitted, so it shouldn't take very much longer to get my permit approved.
So in essence, you, you're working through engineering firms and everything else to try to get this thing done?
Yes. I have a, an engineer firm that is based in Raleigh, and they, they work with the, that's, that's the main scope of work, is, is solid waste.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Newbern?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Newbern, how many employees do you have?
Five.
There was one question that I had, too, and I asked, how long has this business actually been operating here?
Ten years.
And the nature of the business, essentially, you know, as far as the demolition debris handling and so on?
Yes.
Essentially, that's something that's necessary for any type of construction work or actually demolition of existing structures to have a place to put that material? Are there any other places similar to that in the county?
No, other than your, your own transfer station.
Okay.
And the material we take in is, a good portion of it is recycled rather than it going into a landfill.
Okay, that's all.
Anything further?
If I could, please, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Martin?
Mr. Newbern, this, you applied to the state permit three years ago?
Yes.
Correct. And since you didn't hear from them, did you make any effort at all, knowing that you had to do this in three years, that, did you make any effort at all to ask the state to, you know, hurry the permit up so that you could comply, so you would not be in danger of losing your special use permit?
Yes, I did. I called them on a regular basis, but if you call them too much, then they start sticking your permit lower and lower in the stack.
Thank you.
Let's have a comment about the state of this country, and the state that has taken going on three years to get a permit to move some piles of recycling materials 1,000-foot backwards, and people in Raleigh and Washington DC are wondering why they went home in November. And I can tell you that the state, the feds, and the county better pay attention to stuff like this and find a way to cut through the bull, because there is not so many people out here knocking on their door trying to create jobs, that there's another reason why this isn't being done, because there is not that many people out here trying to get building permits, permits for this and other things. Somebody in the state, the federal, and even here locally, better start thinking about some of this stuff and find a way to cut through some of this, I'll just say "bull" again, and, and that's why there's no jobs in this country because of stuff such as this. Thank you.
You're welcome. And for the discussion, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, you'll need to close the... Mr. Chairman, you'll need to close the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. No further discussion, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll ask the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to grant the applicant's request to, for a one-year extension for PB 00-15, with the following conditions attached, that all previously approved conditions shall be included in the permit, all the state permits needed to move the operation east of the power transmission line shall be issued within one year, quarterly progress reports shall be filed with the planning department by you, keep us up with what's going on, and that the applicant will be in compliance with all county ordinances when they're period of 90 days.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Good evening, Mr. Newbern.
Thank you.
Item number 10. We have a presentation this evening on our Keratuck County Rural Center. We have Mrs. Terry Temple, she's the Rural Center Director, to give us an overview of all the good things that are going on with the Rural Center. Mrs. Temple, welcome.
Hi, I'd like to thank you for having me out tonight to discuss something that's really in my heart, and it's the Keratuck Rural Center. Keratuck Rural Center is located in Powell's Point, North Carolina, at the lower part of Keratuck. It's a 105-acre park. If you look at the orange arrows, you will see that's the border of the park. The yellow arrow indicates the new entrance that we have to the park at this time. At the park, we have 120 by 200 covered arena. There's a picture of the indoor arena. It's used for horse shows. We have an outdoor riding ring, 300 by 150. We have a 150 by 250 roping arena, a regulation-sized dressage arena, an eight-stall barn with an apartment, a vet room, a tack room, and a wash bay. We have a 12-stall barn, and six turnout shelters that we've turned into stalls that can be used for rental during events. We have two stocked fishing ponds, one on the north side, and one on the south side. There's a 1,500-foot bulkhead that leads to the sound. It allows access to the sound for kayaks and canoes. This is a dog-friendly park. People can bring their dogs to this park in Keratuck County. It's one of the few that is dog-friendly. There's trails for horses. You can bring your bike and go bike riding. There's some pasture plots on the premises to show the different growth rate of various pasture seeds, and how fertilizer and lime affects the seeds. The park is administered through a partnership between Keratuck County and the local office of the North Carolina Cooperative Extension. The facilities and programs are managed through Cooperative Extension's 4H program. The hours of operation for the Keratuck Rural Center are 8:00 AM to sunset, Monday through Friday, and for special events, the indoor arena and the buildings will be open with reservations. The activities that we've had at the park this far include horse shows, which we've had at least two a month, fishing and horseback riding. We had spring break fun day, where children came out and enjoyed the park. We had educational clinics. We had a sensory training clinic. We had a Martha Josie barrel racing clinic. The Martha Josie barrel racing clinic, the clinicians came from Texas, and we had people as far as Maryland come to join in on this clinic. During that time, we had overnight camping associated with an event only. Currently, only self-contained vehicles can stay during an event. We have future plans to include RV pedestals for electricity and water for the visiting guests. We had a wedding at the park. The local citizen held their first wedding on May 30th. We have people out there on a regular basis checking out the nature, and we've had the 4H summer camps to provide an educational opportunity for the youth in this community. We also had a therapeutic riding program. We had a lot of volunteers from Keratuck County and the surrounding counties come to help with that program and its success. Since we've opened it back up, we have a new entrance at the Milburn-Soiler Road. It allows better access in and out of the park. We've added arena lighting. We can utilize that outdoor arena at night now, where before we could not. We have the addition of a modular office and a modular restroom. They're still under construction and should be finished by the end of December. And I'd like to explain some of the upcoming events that we have scheduled at this time. We have a Ride for Hunger Horse Show, scheduled for January 15th. All the benefits will go to the Lower Keratuck Food Bank. We have two local citizens that have taken on this event. We have an Outer Banks Bully Bash Dog Show, Community Days with area school groups. We've got two of them organized at this point in time, where they can come out and the children can fish and horseback ride. We're going to have a Rural Farm Festival in open house. This will be our premier event to let the people of Keratuck County know about the Rural Center. We'd like for all of you to come out and join us that day, too. And in addition to that, we have the Ride for Disaster Relief to benefit the American Red Cross. We're also going to have some more summer therapeutic riding programs this year, as well as summer camp opportunities. Future plans for the park includes the possibility of a grant. We're working on a grant that could possibly give us a kayak launching dock, paddle trails, boardwalks through the wetlands, a playground, and a picnic pavilion. These are things that we do not have at this time, and through Jason Week's survey, Parks and Rec, they are needed in this area. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you very much. I also would like to recognize Mrs. Cameron Lowe, if you'll stand, please. She is our new extension director, and she's actively involved in this process as well. I want to thank both of you ladies. Y'all are doing a wonderful job with this park, and the citizens of Keratuck should be excited about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
One of the things I'd like to point out to everybody, if you don't know, why the emphasis is so much on horses related to this particular piece of property, because not everybody has a horse, obviously. You'd be amazed how many people do. There are far more horses in the United States now per capita than they ever were when we used them for transportation. And there are groups from outside this area that come here now and use this park. The club up in Chesapeake Seat, the Southeastern Association of Trail Riders, which I was president before I moved down here, has come down for fun day. Every time somebody pulls a horse trailer into this county, the economic effect is between $150 and $200. The horse industry itself is about the number two and three industries in Virginia, North Carolina. You would not believe how much money is spent by these people and the adjunct things that they do, and they create jobs by doing that. And if you think about something that really would improve the kind of bucolic nature of Keratuck County, I can't think of anything I would rather see driving down 168, 158, than beautiful three-rail fences and pastures and horses running out there. In fact, some of my golfing buddies won't like it. Somebody told me once the golf course is a big waste of pasture land. But I won't, I won't make that statement that strong. I play a little golf, too, occasionally. But anyway, I just want you to understand that the, the site is not only a wonderful benefit for the citizens of Keratuck County, it can be a tremendous draw to bring people here as well, and we think it'll be a huge economic benefit to us once it's finished.
Thank you, Mr. Rohr. Anyone else like to make a comment?
Well, since I was kind of intimately involved in the beginnings of this Keratuck County Rural Center, we had a vision when, when it was purchased, and very proud of what's going on out there. And I would like to clarify one thing. When people call it a horse farm, the, the county does not own horses. There were some people actually thought we bought horses and pasture, and we were owning horses. But this is a tremendous asset to the 4H, to the young people, and you don't have to have a horse to enjoy that park. I've been out there myself. It's a beautiful area. It's a beautiful piece of land, and I'm anxious to see the next phase coming into fruition as well, and, and encourage everyone to go out there and, and ride through and look at it. You'll be, be pleased.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
As one of the three of us up here who was intimately involved, as Commissioner Neal said, seeing the picture that you showed of the 4H camps up there this summer, and those kids smiling, that's what this is all about, an opportunity to provide a place of shelter that these kids can go to and learn a little bit about their culture and the history of Keratuck County, and at the same time have a, a good time. And I'll never apologize for trying to provide that type of service to the children and to the citizens of the county, because I see it also becoming a multifunctional part, where senior activities can take place out there. And now that I'm looking closer at that all the time, you know, it's just a nice place to be. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, if I could, I will be the third one that was very intimately involved with this new Rural Center. There is one problem, and it's a real glaring problem. It's not marked on the highway, Rural Center. We need to get with the state. We need to have signage put up, put it on Spot Road on both ends, so that people will know how to get to the Rural Center. And folks, if you want to go see how beautiful it is, the pictures do not do it justice. Spot Road, just turn on Spot Road. It's a, it just goes in a circle, and you will see the main entry to the Rural Center. It's plainly marked, and you owe it to yourself. Just go out there now and look at it. And this is really a, a, what was a diamond in the rough is now a multifaceted diamond. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, you reckon we can get a signed permit from the planning department to do that?
If it's, if it's a state sign, I don't think we had to worry about that.
Be three years, though.
We'll have, we'll have to look into it.
Mr. Scanlon, will you look into signage, proper signage for there, please?
Well, the issue isn't going to be a local signage. It's NC DOT's position on road signage, and they've basically objected to everything that we've attempted to put out there until, and recently, this board about two months ago asked for a bear crossing sign to be put out there. It has been installed by the county staff, and DOT has taken exception to it and asked us to remove it. But NC DOT has taken a very firm and strict position on any signage being put on inside of the road. We certainly will make the effort. We certainly will make an inquiry and a request, but it would be relying upon NC DOT allowing it to be, to be installed.
We'll take it down when they cut the grass.
Would it be possible to talk to the owners of the private property at both ends of Spot Road, and perhaps maybe get permission to put a sign on private property, because that would serve the purpose?
Absolutely.
Okay, moving on. Item 11, update on emergency management. I assume Mrs. Christianberry's going to do that, is that correct?
Yes, sir. She's approaching the mic now.
We have Mrs. Rebecca Christianberry from our Keratuck Emergency Management Department. Welcome, Mrs. Christianberry.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. I am the Program Assistant in our Emergency Management Office. Our Director, Mary Math Nunez, can be here this evening. She sends her best. And we really just wanted to provide you with a brief overview of some of the things that we accomplished in the last year, and then some of the things that we're looking forward to over the next year. So one of, one of our biggest accomplishments over the last year was the approval and adoption of the Hazard Mitigation Plan. I know some of you were a part of that, and that was completed by our Local Emergency Planning Committee, so we commend them for their efforts. And what this plan really ensures us is that we'll be eligible for non-emergency disaster funding, which would be any pre-disaster mitigation funding, or repetitive loss flooding grant funding. We also sponsored training this year. We had a ICS, which is Incident Command System 100 and 200 course, that was actually taught locally by our fire marshal. We offered one Community Emergency Response Team training. We graduated six members, so now we currently have three teams in the county, and we hope to, to get some more teams together. And then we also offered an Explosive Ordnance Device training out at the beach for our volunteer fire departments. In terms of events, we hosted the North Carolina-Virginia Hurricane Evacuation Meeting, which is an annual meeting. We also participated in the Independence Day Celebration at Clarolla. And then we had one EOC activation, our Emergency Operations Center activation for Hurricane Earl. And while we were pretty well spared, it was a great training opportunity for us. We have a lot of new people and new positions, so it was a good experience for all of us. Something that we want to touch on briefly, we have a new formula for our Emergency Management Performance Grant Funding, and this is for the 2011 grant award year. And the, the state has worked to come up with a way to more equitably distribute the money amongst the counties. They're using more of a merit-based approach. We have universal activities and optional activities, and the universal activities must be completed to meet the baseline requirements. And then there's optional activities, which we can complete for supplemental funding. So they use a three-tiered population approach to determine how much each county gets. So counties with a population of less than $75,000 receive a baseline of $20,625. And then we have the opportunity to choose from over 40 activities. We have the opportunity to choose six additional activities that we can meet throughout the year to ensure that we'll get some extra grant funding. So that amount is $2,286 per additional activity. So in the, in the long run, if we complete each of the additional activities, combined with our baseline requirements, we'll receive just over $34,000 in grant funding. And we really use this money to enhance our program and maybe do some things that we normally wouldn't be able to do. Actually, this week, we're having some folks come in from our web EOC, which is what we use often in our Emergency Operations Center. It's a computer-based program, come in and provide us with some training. So it's, it's very good opportunity for us. Then, looking ahead, obviously, since we've approved our Hazard Mitigation Plan, we want to work towards meeting those goals. The plan has to be updated every year, so we want to take a look at the goals annually and make sure that we're meeting our requirements. We also want to work on communication with the public. We felt like we had a fairly successful run during Hurricane Earl with having, especially our tourist population, come to the county website to get information on evacuation. So we're going to look at other ways to kind of harness that and make sure that everyone's getting the information that they need. We were able, our Public Information Officer was able to start a Twitter feed during Earl, and that was also fairly successful. So I think we'll look at some more social media options as well. We also want to work towards our Storm Ready Certification. Storm Ready is a National Weather Service program, and it really focuses on severe weather preparedness. It also, a benefit is that if we reach the certification, we can get credit points for the community rating system. So that's also great. And then, of course, we want to continue our collaboration with our local partners. We work very closely with our partners in Virginia through the Regional Catastrophic Planning Team, and also through our, our local partners with our 13 counties that surround the Alamo. I think that's it. Does anyone have any questions?
No questions. Thank you, Mrs. Christianberry.
Thank you.
You have a nice evening.
You, too. Thank you.
Next is item 12, appointment to the Walnut Island Sanitary District Board. We have been given a list of three names for consideration. There's one seat that is available. The three individuals that we've been given names for is Mrs. Gail Norris, Loretta Robinson, and Tony Evans.
Mr. Chairman, that actually is the, the three on the, currently on the board.
Oh, that was what was in my pocket.
Ms. Gail Norris has stepped aside and actually created a vacancy, and what's in front of you tonight is to fulfill her vacant seat.
Okay.
If you would, if your pleasure, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Ms. Kay Hannah for that position on the Walnut Island Senator District Board.
Have a motion in a second. Call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. It's done. Item 13 was deleted. Item 13A, a selection of a voting delegate for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Legislative Goals. Do I have a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Ratherich.
Second. Have a nomination in a second. Have a nomination in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? 14, 15, excuse me, or 14 is Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion?
Vote for approval.
Second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Item 15, Commissioners Report. Mr. Martin?
Yes. As a new commissioner, people have been talking to me and Mrs. Julie Midget, who is one of the workers and I guess managers down at Barca with the refuge there. I was in there and taking my weekly trash in, and I asked her about paint and other chemicals and stuff like that, what we could do with them. And she said, "We really need to have another paint day and a pickup here in the county." And I thought that perhaps we might get together and do that because I have about six cans of paint that I don't have, you know, a place to put. And we have some insecticides and herbicides that we need to get rid of. And I'm just wondering if we could set something up for the whole county so people could get rid of some of this.
Yes, sir, we can.
Thank you. Mr. Etheridge?
Nothing other than to welcome the three new members and state that I'm willing to work with you in any way I can, and I look forward to your service as we all work together to move the county forward.
Mr. O'Neill?
I have just a few short things. Number one, we had a wonderful Christmas parade and tree lighting out at the Extension Center on Saturday morning. Had a lot of floats, the high school students and Boy Scouts and just the band. It was just a wonderful day to go out there with your family. It was, had a pancake breakfast and want to commend those that put that together. Second thing I have about the post office, I've had brought to my attention that not only have we closed this, not we, but the federal government has allowed the post office at the seat of government in Currituck County to close. I would dare say we're probably the only county in the state of North Carolina, maybe in the entire nation, that doesn't have a post office at its county seat. And then I've been told that in addition to closing that, now the Moyoc Post Office is closing at lunchtime. And that it's, you know, I would like to see a letter written to the Postmaster General, but I want it copied to our congresspeople and senators because if you just send it to them, it goes in File 13. But if you copy the congressmen and senators, they know we expect a response back. And we have contacted Congressman Jones and our senators and asked about this, and they basically told us that they're working on it. But I'd like for us to send a letter to the Postmaster General asking him, why is, because I've had people say they've asked in the Moyoc Post Office why it's closing at lunchtime, and all they get told is it's coming from up on High. So we need to go up on High and ask them why the Moyoc Post Office is closing at lunchtime and what their plans are to relocate this post office here at the county seat. So that's to the Postmaster General and copy our federal representatives unless the board objects. Second thing is the toll road in Chesapeake. I've seen where that has been advertised that it could possibly go up to $5. Well, Economics 101 tells you that if you go from $2 to $5, people are going to start using the old road, and they're going to get less revenue instead of more revenue. And I think that the councilwoman that was here sooner, Ms. Ritter, I think Commissioner Etheridge had talked about getting together with them to discuss the toll road. We certainly don't need that toll to increase in this environment that we're in. And then I'd like to ask Mr. Woody. We have complaints on the proposed small area plan in Corolla. How do I get a copy of that so I can see what it is that's being, that people are not liking?
Currently, we don't have a plan. We're still getting public input. This thing is very early in the planning process. And quite frankly, a lot of the information that was presented tonight is just not factually correct. There is no proposal to close streets in Corolla Village. There is no overlay district or historic district plan. We are in the very beginning stages of this. There's information on our website. If you go to the Planning Department's webpage and you go to Small Area Plans, you can see information about it. I can put that together and share it with the Board of Commissioners.
Have you had a community meeting?
We have had community meetings. We've had several. And we're trying our best to get the correct information out there. That's the best I can say. And hopefully, we can get that out there so folks can at least make informed decisions of whether or not they want to support the planning effort or not. But a plan is not a regulatory document. It's just a study and makes recommendations for policies.
What is the objective?
The objective is to look at Corolla Village and look at the character that exists there and assuming it is an asset to Currituck County, other things the county should do or the policies we should have that continue to make Corolla Village successful. Also, the county ourselves, we have an asset there. We have the Wellhead Club. You have the Lighthouse property there. So there's a lot of investment and assets that exist there. An example of an improvement that plans can actually promote is the bike path we recently put in along 12, which I think helps pedestrian mobility in that area. So the objective is to make Corolla Village, or to keep Corolla Village, the unique in the place it is today. Doesn't mean it has to be heavy-handed. It's just trying to look at what exists and what, if anything, the county can do to encourage that atmosphere to continue.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I follow up?
Certainly.
Who is on the committee? They were saying there's no one from Corolla Village on the committee. I understood that.
We've got some, a small committee that we kind of meet and bounce ideas off of. There is residents from each street in the residential part of Corolla Village. There are several, multiple business owners and people that own property and work and own businesses in Corolla Village. There's representatives from the Wellhead Club. There's representatives from OBC or the folks that run the Lighthouse. I think we have a very diverse makeup of committee. We've never, never closed that meeting to anyone. Everybody's welcome to come and discuss.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mrs. Gilbert?
I just report to the, 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 to